Call the media to order for City Council, August 28th, 2017. Please stand and join with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, councilors, and as our council president mentioned at our last meeting last week, which was the finance meeting, our council president Sullivan and his family are off for a few days, so hopefully they're having a good vacation. Councilors, and just before we begin tonight's meeting, just want to take a moment and just for us just to think and reflect, unfortunately, we, as I drove here this evening, I was able to watch a sunset in other parts of the country. Those people in Texas have been devastated with a very, very hard-hitting tropical hurricane storm, and they're probably looking for anyone that they can survive. So just, I just want us to think about that for a minute of how fortunate we are, and the fortunate part that they're not in the same situation that we are tonight. So just a minute to reflect and, you know, bless them all and hope that they can come through this process. Thank you. And with that being said, Madam Clerk?
The acceptance of the minutes of the July 24th, 2017, City Council meeting?
Accepted and placed on file.
Reappointment of Kenneth Galligan, 25 Messina Drive, Brockton, Mass. to the Traffic Commission pursuant to City of Brockton Ordinance, Section 466, for a term of three years.
Refer to Finance.
Reappointment of Morton Schleifer, 60 Irma Drive, Brockton, Mass. to the Traffic Commission pursuant to City of Brockton Ordinance, Section 466, for a term of three years.
Refer to Finance.
Petition of Joseph Sostre Diaz for a garage license located at 71 Plain Street, Brockton, Mass.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. If there's somebody here in favor, please come forward and state your name to the clerk.
Here to speak on behalf of Mr. Diaz, Attorney Chris Vale, and I want to introduce you to Mr. Jose Sostre Diaz, as well as his two sons, Tommy and Tony, who both work at the shop as well. This is a shop that they took over, on which they bought J&R Repair. It's a former garage in which they are going for the motor vehicle repair mechanical, the auto body repair, as well as the garage license for this 71 Plain Street residence. I just want the board to know that Mr. Sostre here has recently bought a house as well in Brockton, as well as his two sons, both all very close to where he wants to set up his shop, where he plans on living here and working here. I do know that he's had approximately 40 years of experience, and also 24 years of actually owning his own garage and business in Dorchester. So I ask that the board approve.
Very good, thank you. Is there, any of you gentlemen have anything you want to say at the same time?
No, I just, we just moved up here to get away from the violence, and where we got our houses are real nice, and, you know, playing the race and the rest of my family up here, and work here, and whatever I could do for the community, I could do.
Great, great, okay. Is there any else that would like to be heard in favor of the petition? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Tony Sostre, the eldest, son of the two. Been a Brockton resident for about seven years now. I enjoy living out here. I would like Dad to get the shop, because it keeps us, the family, well-knit. We work on our cars together. We've built two project cars that we win trophies for in car shows, and I could use this to raise my son the same way he raised me, to get everything done right, as far as body-wise, and teach him the trades, the tricks of the trades. And hopefully, if all goes well, when I retire, I get to take over from him.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to be heard? See and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anybody here in opposition? Please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Anyone in opposition? See and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. And this licenses for the garage license located at 71 Plain Street. Any questions from councilors?
Just for consistency, wouldn't this be at least one of the petitions that goes before Public Safety for review?
Yes.
Okay, a motion that, well, do I have to do all three, since they're all going for?
I would probably want to keep them separate. I mean, what can we do them all?
You could take them together.
We could take them together, councilors, if you want to do it that way. Then if the motion's going to be that they go off to Public Safety Subcommittee, then we can send them, send them there at that particular time. So why don't we take the next hearing, which would be for the vehicle repair mechanical.
Petition of Joseph Sostre Diaz for a motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 71 Plain Street, Brockton, Mass.
This would be our same argument.
Same thing, thank you. Is there anyone else here? First, let me say that, open the hearing up, and you already spoke in favor of, is there anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of? Please come forward and state your name to the clerk. See and none, anybody here in opposition? No one in opposition? I see and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed as well. Item number six, which is now the vehicle repair body license. Madam Clerk?
Petition of Joseph Sostre Diaz for a motor vehicle repair body license located at 71 Plain Street, Brockton, Mass.
Same as well, counselor.
Open the hearing. Anyone here in favor of? Same. Anyone else that's, anyone else that's in favor of, please come forward and state your name. See and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? No one here in opposition? I declare that part of the hearing closed.
The Fire Department has objections, because this area does not conform to the standards outlined currently. There's no proper equipment to allow for painting, priming, or bonding on premises. Pending installation of the proper equipment and approval by the Fire Department, the Fire Department will then have no objection.
Can you make your comment? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, if you want to, on his behalf, if you want to make your comment.
The Fire Department, they go up there and they check everything. The air compressor was the last thing, and I had to pay $50 for an inspector to come down, and I had to pay the electrician to come down, the, I had to pull a permit for the electrician, the building inspector, and the gas trap inspector, and they all passed them.
Do you have a spray boot?
Excuse me?
Do you have a spray boot?
No, we're going to put a spray boot as soon as we...
That's what he's saying.
Not where it's, once you install those, and the Fire Department inspects it, it's okay.
Yeah, but we can't install it until I get the permit for the body shop, so I could, you know, once I get the permit for the body shop, I already got a company coming in to do it, right away.
Let me explain this to you, that you would be able to make body repairs, as long as you don't say...
Don't paint, exactly.
Bonding, grinding, bonding, or priming.
Yes, yes, sir.
You could supple at that if you wanted.
Yes, yeah, we already know that. The Fire, the chief, the captain...
That's good, thank you.
The captain told us exactly the same thing. No bond, or no nothing, just, when we get the spray boot, then we could do it.
All right, thank you, we understand. Thank you, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Right, so at this, excuse me, I'm the chairman, so at this time, I would move that these three matters be forwarded to the Public Safety Subcommittee for review.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, that these particular three items, number four, five, and six, would be sent to the Public Safety Subcommittee. All in favor of that? Opposed? Goes to the Committee on Public Safety. We go to item number seven. And just, before you do, let me just explain, that's the process that we have. We have a Public Safety Subcommittee meeting, and they will meet, Counselor Fowell is the chairman, I'm sure he'll call one at an adequate time, in the near future, as near as he can do. We are in a little bit of some hiatus, but I'm sure he knows, you know, that you want to get going as well. So he'll call a meeting, and then it'll be finalized, and then just come back to the council with its final approval, okay? But that's our process, okay?
Could I go ahead and, did a company put a paint boot now, or do I have to wait until after?
Well, if you want to know if he can put the paint boot now, or does he have to wait for what he has to do with Public Safety? I mean, if he wants to...
Well, the, the Fire Department has no objection, as long as this installation is done.
The company's going to pull the permit...
If everyone else has given you the approval, that's fine, but I would hold off, it's not going to be that long a period of time, so that we don't put the cart before the horse show.
Right, right.
And we won't have any problems.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I also suggest that they, excuse me, I'm sorry, can they also suggest that they bring their parking map to the Public Safety meeting, or have that available regarding the amount of cars on the lot and the parking structure?
They will. Yeah, bring a set of plans, so it's showing the whole facility and what's being done, so that they have that in front of them. Okay? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, number seven.
Petition of John Abreu of Abreu &amp; Sons, Inc., DBA Abreu &amp; Sons Auto Repair, for a motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 515 North Main Street, Brockton, Mass.
And we might as well, I don't see any objections, councilors, we'll do number eight at the same time, it's all affiliated with the one. Madam Clerk, you can read that as well.
Petition of John Abreu of Abreu &amp; Sons, Inc., DBA Abreu &amp; Sons Auto Repair, for a motor vehicle repair body license located at 515 North Main Street, Brockton, Mass.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. If somebody's here in favor of, please come up and state your name to the clerk, please.
This would be for the mechanical.
This is the mechanical one that we're doing first, okay?
My name is John Abreu, and I'm trying to run a auto repair up in 515 North Main Street, building number four. And I also run a tow business around here, too.
You also run a, what is it?
A towing business.
Towing business?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to that? No? Okay. Is there anyone else here in favor that wants to be heard? Please come forward and state your name to the clerk. See and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Please come forward and state their name, also to the clerk. See and none? I declare that part of the hearing closed. That was the mechanical vehicle repair mechanical we did, so let's do the next one, which would be the, is it the auto vehicle repair body license?
Petition of John Abreu of Abreu &amp; Sons, Inc., DBA Abreu &amp; Sons Auto Repair, for a motor vehicle repair body license located at 515 North Main Street, Brockton, Mass.
I declare the hearing open. You're here in favor, state your name again to the clerk, please.
I'm John Abreu, and I'm running a auto body, no, no, auto repair up in 515 North Main Street, building number four.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard in favor? Please come forward and state your name. Anyone else? See and none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Please come forward and state your name. Anyone here in opposition? I declare that part of the hearing closed. City Clerk?
The Fire Department has objections, but we have the same circumstances we have, but it does not conform to the standards outlined. So consequently, there'll be no spray painting, no bonding, no bonding, until such times that the proper equipment is installed and inspected by, and okayed by the Fire Department.
I know, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Barnes?
I just had a question, actually, before referring it. So, Mr. Abreu?
Gabriel.
Okay. Is your shop the one behind that store that's at the fork?
No, I'm in the middle. There's Chico in the front, there's Ambien at the end, on the outside. I'm in the middle.
Okay, so I'm trying to look at the Google map, I'm trying to figure out the area. So I'm looking at the clock, and I see the transmission shop on the corner, right?
No, we, I'm right behind the transmission shop.
Right, so you're the building behind?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I asked, you're the building behind that store, okay. So, the lot that's behind there, who owns that? It kind of spills off into Montello, North Montello Street.
Yep.
That's you?
No, Eddie owns it.
Oh, no, he owns the next one, next door, right? I'm talking about behind your building.
Behind, I don't know who owns that lot there.
Okay.
I just know the building I refer to.
Counselor, these are questions we'll have to ask at Public Safety, okay? Just...
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you're Public Safety or not, but that's where they'd be asked, so, okay?
Okay, well, that, okay, I'm not on Public Safety, though.
Is anyone making a motion to send it to Public Safety?
Uh, yeah, I move that these two measures go to Public Safety for review.
Second. Motion's been made, and seconded, that the same situation here with items seven and eight, they'd be referred to the Committee on Public Safety. All in favor? Opposed? Goes to the Committee on Public Safety. Again, as I mentioned to the other folks that were here, the Public Safety Subcommittee will hear your request, which will be in a short time. The council will call a meeting, and then finalization would come back to the City Council. So it shouldn't take too much longer, you'll get notified to when that meeting would be held, okay? Just make sure you bring all information needed, plans and everything, so that the council can see just where you are located, so they have an understanding of what you're trying to do, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you. Madam Clerk, we go to item number nine.
Petition of Kenneth Leslie, DBA Dynasty Use Furniture, for a secondhand articles license located at 733 Main Street, Brockton, Mass.
Is this, is this, this isn't here?
It just has...
Yeah. Good evening, sir, how are you?
All right, and yourself?
Yeah, and your name?
Kenneth Leslie.
Okay, and you're looking for a secondhand article license, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Furniture.
Furniture, okay. And located at 733 Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Same situation here, this will be referred to Public Safety as well, and that'll be at some point in the time, probably within the next few weeks, and then finalization would come back before the City Council. Just make sure you bring any and all information, so that they know what you're looking, looking for, what you're doing, okay?
Okay.
Property lines, and anything pertaining to the property as well, okay?
Okay.
Counselors, I need a motion?
President?
Counselors?
Just information, 733 Main Street.
Yes.
It's old, union furniture, very dilapidated building. Mr. Leslie is looking to put this business in there, and the person who owns the building is willing to be rehabbing the entire building, and it will turn into a very, very gem-like building in that area.
That's, that's good.
So the Watford Councilor, present Watford Councilor, is well in support of this.
Great, no, that's good to hear, too. It's good to hear, that's been a long time coming, that building's been sitting there with its problems, but, okay, I just need a motion to second.
Mr. President, I don't think this is going to have to go into Public Safety. This doesn't go into Public Safety, does it?
Uh, it probably should.
Well, we have secondhand licenses before, actually, not if I think about it.
I mean, it's the council's decision.
Okay, all right.
In the past, we have sent the others, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I'm just following suit, so...
For the issues of license, I'd be more than happy to make the public wire and put it on stipulations for the hours of operation, days of operation, if that's even what's being talked about.
If Counselor doesn't have any objections, we can, we can move it this evening, you know, I'll lightly open up to any questions and concerns any other councilors have. If you want to move it this evening, we'll do that, but, if anyone has any...
Well, just...
Go ahead, Counselor.
Just as a point of information, I really don't have a real problem with this.
Okay.
We should be consistent, however, and we do have two colleagues absent. And, and I know that that shouldn't weigh in any vote we take tonight, but just out of professional courtesy, we have the council president missing, we have Counselor Cruz missing, and I'm just wondering if it shouldn't go to Public Safety, so that all of us can have a discussion with the gentleman about hours of operation, and what's going to go on there, and, but it, but it's the will of the council, it's...
Counselor Rodriguez?
Mr. President, for some of us that lived on the south side of the city, we've known how dilapidated and how ugly that property has been for the number of years that it's been.
Mm-hmm.
And there's not a single resident in that area that does not have a problem with that building. And we have an opportunity here from someone, Ginny Martins, that we all know actually is the person who purchased the property, and is willing to invest some serious funds to rehab this property. I think this is some, one of those things that we need to move on as quick as we possibly can. It used to be a furniture store, it's going to go back to becoming a furniture store. In terms of hours of operation, the operator stores do, and that's something that we can kind of adjust in here, but as far as sending it, I don't remember, I sit on the, on the Subcommittee on, on Public Safety, I don't remember a furniture store going on the, on the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting, and I sit on it. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, if we have an opportunity to fix something sooner than, rather than later, I think it's something that we ought to do for the good of this community. People that live in that, and that's, on that side of the city are actually fed up with that building the way it looks, and I think we have an opportunity to do something to fix it. I think we ought to look at it, you know, open it up, and whatever questions we have asked, I mean, the owner is here, the business owner is here, open it up, and let's take care of that, instead of just kind of, because if we don't do it now, remember, the month of September is still, we're still on summer months. And I think we're delaying a, a project that doesn't need delaying. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, seen in the light, and I don't disagree with what Counselor Rodriguez has said, and I understand the members of the Public Safety Committee what they're saying as well, and we do want to be consistent, but I, I think at this point in time, where we do have some people here, is Acting President this evening, I'm going to make the recommendation that we go ahead, move, move forward with it. If anyone has any questions, we can ask them now. If you want to set some stipulations, we can make that done. I don't, I don't want to hold somebody up that could probably have a month's work, work being done while it's still being held up here at City Hall. So with that being said, if any other councilors have any objections? Counselor Fowell?
No objection, then I would like to ask some questions, so that we have some information on the record.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Okay. What will the hours of operation be for the business?
Well, right now, the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, probably nine to eight. And on Saturday, it would probably be somewhere around from nine to six, and on Sunday, 12 to five.
And are you familiar with the record-keeping that's required for secondhand articles? Could you tell us what you know about our ordinances in terms of the requirements for keeping records for articles coming in, articles being sold, articles going out?
Yes, I can. The record-keeping is basically simple, you just got to keep a record of all the items that were in, and when the items go out, you keep a record marked with all the items that went out. It's a simple keeping, the record.
No, but I mean, in terms of people who bring something in to sell, and people who purchase it?
Well, people that bring stuff in, it would be probably not much people bringing stuff in. We will supply all our own items and products, so it wouldn't really be too many people bringing stuff in, but we will be bringing our own items in.
Well, I, I would defer to the clerk, but I think selling secondhand articles is a requirement that you keep a record of someone who's bringing an article in to be sold, in terms of their name and address, and, and, and I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying you would do this, sir, but sometimes people sell secondhand articles, you wouldn't know it, and they're stolen, and that's why we have record-keeping. And we don't want you to get caught with something that might be hot, and, and we don't want it to be sold to someone else, so...
Well, in a matter like that, if we do decide to take items from any individual, we would keep a record if we decide to do that. But right now, we only deciding to bring in our own products right now, so if we do decide, like later on down the line, to start taking in stuff as the business go on, then we will keep a record.
But where would you get a secondhand article to sell, then?
Well, usually, if I get a secondhand article, it's usually on a, probably a foreclosure, or sometime a personal estate sale, or sometime, it depends. It varies.
Okay, I, I'm going to yield back and say thank you, and let my colleagues ask any questions that they may have.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Azak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I threw you to my colleague through the, I believe that what you were speaking about, Counselor Fowell, is consignment, and what this gentleman's explaining is it's secondhand in the sense that he, he has his own sources where he will buy used furniture and resell it. There's, there are different licenses, or maybe the clerk can clarify the different licenses that are available for secondhand?
Yeah, it, just to my colleague, I would like to defer to the clerk, and see if he could educate us on this a little bit.
I've got a question, the consignment, this is a gentleman that's going to buy and sell used furniture.
Correct, yeah, that's...
The ordinance clearly states it, you mark, that's a very civil process, you mark down who you purchased it from, you keep an inventory on it, and then who you sold it to. It's really that simple.
I believe he stated that...
The consignment still would be much different...
Correct.
...than this. So that's what it is, it's record-keeping.
But I believe the gentleman stated, explained that that's what he was going to do, is keep record of it, correct?
So if he were to go to a motel, a hotel, for example, and buy all the furniture in there, he wouldn't have to, you know, he would just say that he purchased all his furniture from that particular company, so...
Any other, Counselor Stadenski, did you have anything else you want to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good, okay. Anyone else that has anything else to add? Counselor Fowell?
Well, then, given the sentiment of the council, I would move that we grant this license, subject to the stipulations on hours of operation and days of operation as presented by this gentleman, and that it be limited, obviously, to furniture, no other secondhand articles. If he needs a license to sell something else, obviously, I would expect that he would come back in.
Correct, correct.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made, and seconded, on that, on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? So granted. And you understand what the whole process is, and if there's any other questions or concerns, or you may not have an understanding with our ordinance, I'd ask you to please get in touch with the city clerk, okay? Okay, thank you. Wish you well, and gave you a little bit of a head start, okay?
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Madam Clerk, we go to item number 10.
Report of the Ordinance Committee for its meeting of July 26, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of August 21, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the provisions of master general law, recommending an appropriation of $460,066 from unappropriated estimated receipts to the Brockton Public Schools, School spending, in order to appropriate additional revenue in the final state budget.
Accepted and placed on file.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Fowell?
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong time to do this. Thank you.
Okay. From the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the police chief, requesting authorization to expend additional grant monies related to the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway Safety Division's fiscal year 2017, Sustained Traffic Enforcement Step Grant Program, in the amount of $30,000.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Superintendent of Parks, Acting Superintendent of Cemeteries, requesting a transfer of $20,000 for fiscal year 18, Ordinary Maintenance of Goods and Supplies to Cemetery Personal Services Other Than Overtime. This transfer would allow the current part-time clerical position to be a full-time position for fiscal year 18.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the chief of the Fire Department, requesting to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $500 from Enbridge Foundation to City of Brockton Fire Department, Enbridge Foundation Grant Fund, for the purpose of purchasing four gas meters to monitor air quality at emergency scenes, to better protect the public, as well as all first responders.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the superintendent of parks requesting the acceptance of a donation of $150,000 for playground equipment and installation services from the New England Patriots Foundation for improvements to McKinley Park. The associated donation of site preparation services by the J. Dorenzo Company and the associated donation of engineering and landscape is serviced by J.K. Holmgren Engineering, Inc.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances, Section 11-211 is hereby amended by adding the following new subsection. Section D, there shall be one license issued for each 2,000 population as recorded in the most recent federal census at the time of application for a license. Question is on the mayor's veto on the ordinance postponed from July 24, 2017, city council meeting to August 28, 2017 meeting.
Council Fowle?
Mr. President, this was continued from our last council meeting. And as we may remember, we passed an ordinance that would limit the number of garage or auto repair licenses to one for every 2,000 inhabitants. After that, we received a letter from the city solicitor, which I read in some detail. I'm going to ask the council to vote to override the mayor's veto, and then I would ask you to check item number 48 on the agenda. I have actually filed an amendment to the ordinance which would allow for a garage, an auto repair license to be issued to a subsequent person at the same address, so that if a businessman owned a piece of property and there was an automobile repair business there, someone could come along and also have an automobile repair license there. And if you are granted an automobile sales license in this city, you would be allowed to obtain an automobile repair license, because it seems reasonable that if someone invests the money to become an auto sales dealer, they would probably want to be able to repair their vehicle. So that is the intent of the amendment. If we override the mayor's veto, the original ordinance would stand, subject to the amendment that I have filed, which I think, if you take a look at it, satisfies more than the issues that were raised by the city solicitor in terms of fairness to property owners. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that my colleagues may have.
Everybody understands that, so the question that's coming before us is that we override the mayor's veto. And in order for that to be, that we need two-thirds of vote for that to transpire, so...
And I have one other issue, and I would defer to our legislative council. In my opinion, the people who just had public hearings on automobile repair licenses, they would not be subject to the ordinance because we would be overriding it after they've had their hearing.
Correct.
At least that would seem very fair to me if it isn't the law, but I suspect that's the law. So those who are here tonight would not be subjected to the new ordinance because they have submitted their information, their application well in advance.
Everybody has a clear understanding of that. So again, the question...
So, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. So just for clarification, yea would be to override the mayor's veto to allow 40, 53 of the amendment to be introduced to this ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Clear understanding? We have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Counsel Barnes?
Yes.
Counsel Beauregard?
Yes.
Counsel Eneary?
Yes.
Counsel Fowle?
Yes.
Counsel O'Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Márquez?
Yes.
Counsel Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
Nine and affirmative, so the council has overridden the mayor's veto with that. And then...
I move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Which number? Counselors, we're going to, yes, we're going to go ahead and why don't we go to number 48? Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances. Chapter 2, Section 11 of the revised ordinances is hereby amended by amending the following subsection. Section 11-214, same transferability.
On that, I believe we've got to go to ordinance with that, Counsel Fowle? Yes, okay. So with that and what has been read in regards to what Counsel Fowle was speaking about, I'm going to refer that particular item to the committee on ordinance, okay? So we've done that, and that follows suit with what we just did with the other item. Madam Clerk, number 27.
An ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton be ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton as follows. Of Brockton, Chapter 27 zoning is hereby amended by adding the following new article, Article 19, moratorium, the regulation and taxation of marijuana act, section 27-142. And that was referred to the committee on planning and ordinance. And in ordinance, it was favorable as amended.
Right, now the question's on a passage to a third reading as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 27 zoning of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton by adding Article 18, Thatcher Street, Smart Growth Overlay District. That was referred to ordinance and planning, and it was favorable with stipulations and ordinance.
This here, counsel, is a question on a passage to a third reading with the stipulations. By hand vote, all in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
Order, does the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Delmar Road from Dagmar Drive to Dodge Road, a distance of 984.17 feet? And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street or way of said City of Brockton. That was referred to the committee on finance and planning, and those reports were favorable.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
Nine and affirmative, so the council has overridden the mayor's veto with that. And then...
I move reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Which number? Counselors, we're going to, yes, we're going to go ahead and why don't we go to number 48? Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances. Chapter 2, Section 11 of the revised ordinances is hereby amended by amending the following subsection. Section 11-214, same transferability.
On that, I believe we've got to go to ordinance with that, Counsel Fowle? Yes, okay. So with that and what has been read in regards to what Counsel Fowle was speaking about, I'm going to refer that particular item to the committee on ordinance, okay? So we've done that, and that follows suit with what we just did with the other item. Madam Clerk, number 27.
An ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton be ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton as follows. Of Brockton, Chapter 27 zoning is hereby amended by adding the following new article, Article 19, moratorium, the regulation and taxation of marijuana act, section 27-142. And that was referred to the committee on planning and ordinance. And in ordinance, it was favorable as amended.
Right, now the question's on a passage to a third reading as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 27 zoning of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton by adding Article 18, Thatcher Street, Smart Growth Overlay District. And that was referred to ordinance and planning, and it was favorable with stipulations and ordinance.
This here, counsel, is a question on a passage to a third reading with the stipulations. By hand vote, all in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
Order, does the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the City of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Maplewood Circle from North Carey Street easterly? And for that purpose, it is necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street or way of said City of Brockton. That was referred to finance and planning, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes? Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted. Now we'll take items number 32 to 40 collectively. All in favor? Opposed? Should be 41? 41, yeah. 41 to 41, I'm sorry.
Appointment of Lawrence Siskind of 51 Briar Cliff Road, Brockton, as an alternate to the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable. Appointment of Mildred McCowen of 612 East Street, Brockton, to the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term. Appointment of David Andrews of 124 Cliffton Ave., Brockton, as an alternate to the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term. Appointment of Carol DeLorey of 19 North Basset Road, Brockton, to the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term. Appointment of Clayton Reichenberg Jr. of 115 Darren Drive, Brockton, as an alternate to the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term. Appointment of Jill Madden of 96A Earl Street, Brockton, as an alternate to the Brockton Council on Aging for a term of three years. Appointment of Barbara A. Fox of 55 Henry Street, Brockton, to the Brockton Council on Aging for a three-year term. Appointment of Jeffrey A. Thompson of 45 Ames Road, Brockton, to the Brockton Zoning Board of Appeals, replacing Adeline Jeffrey Charnell for a three-year term. Appointment of Donald Williams of 1342 Belmont Street, Brockton, to the Brockton Community Cable Television Board for a three-year term. Appointment of Adeline Jeffrey Charnell of 30 Foster Street, Brockton, Mass., as an alternate to the Brockton License Commission for a three-year term. They were all referred to finance, and those reports were favorable.
Do we, I'm sorry. We on 41? Okay, the question now is confirmation by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $1,079,000 from Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division to City of Brockton DPW Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $1,000 from Gang Resistance Education and Training Great Foundation Grant to City of Brockton Police Department Gang Resistance Education and Training Great Foundation Grant Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $5,000 from 2016 SHSP Grant to City of Brockton Emergency Management 2016 SHSP Grant Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $1,000 from Gang Resistance Education and Training Great Foundation Grant Fund to City of Brockton Police Department Gang Resistance Education and Training Great Foundation Grant Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $5,000 from 2016 SHSP Grant to City of Brockton Emergency Management 2016 SHSP Grant Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $10,000 from Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation to City of Brockton Public Library Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation Grant Fund. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Azak?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Eneary?
Yes.
Fowle?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Spadinski?
Yes.
Madam Inferment?
The order is adopted.
Resolve to invite the owners of International Auto Works and Lubra Auto Body of 62-64 Elliot Street, Brockton, Mass., to address issues concerning hours of business and business procedures. That was referred to finance, and that report was favorable.
Counselors, this is the one that we had sort of a miscommunication of however last week, but we didn't look too pretty on TV either. But in any case, do we want this to go to public safety? Is this where we want?
Yes, I filed the resolve, and I wish to see it go to public safety. Thank you.
Okay, so at this particular time, I'm going to second, have a second that we move to public safety? Second.
On the motion.
Counsel Barnes?
I thought this was tabled because it was determined at the time that this was more of a landlord-tenant dispute and that we were getting into, yeah, recommending the correspondence of, oh. Yeah, but I thought it was, we determined that we were getting into hot water and their communication and all that stuff.
I thought that was another discussion with the other one.
We did bring that up, thank you, Mr. Chair, but that it was decided that it would be best to go to public safety.
Right.
There was an issue with the landlord dispute, but there was other issues that concerned, that were concerned, and that's why we chose to bring it to public safety. the play equipment, picture of which the, that I have supplied to you. The foundation is willing to contribute, pay for the play equipment itself, the edging to go around the equipment, the site layout, the digging of the footings, the installation of the larger equipment, the installation of the edging, and as well as some technical assistance during the community build portion of this. So, there is a community build portion. The city is responsible to provide a location. We've chosen McKinley Park, some security fencing during the construction, the excavation of the site, coordination of the community build, concrete during the community build, the surfacing, the cost of which will also be absorbed by the city. We are hoping to utilize CDGB funds for that. The installation of the surfacing, and any additional equipment that anyone else might like to donate.
Question, question, Counselor Asak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Coppin, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Just because of the location of McKinley Park, has, have we thought about any sort of fencing to close off because of where it's located? I don't even know why we ever put a park there, but it is there?
We have looked into, and will continue to look in, to fencing. Our initial thought was almost to fence off the entire park, but seeing how opening up Keith Park really seemed to, removing a lot of those fences and some of the, the old stone wall, seemed to open that up and ease traffic through there, I think our goal in the end will be to simply fence off around this play equipment, instead of the entire park.
So, just for the safety of the children?
Correct, correct. So, if a mother has a child on the play equipment, and another child playing at the basketball court, she can kind of, or he, father can keep an eye on both kids and know that the kids on the play equipment are in a contained area.
Very good.
Point of, point of information?
Counselor Elliott?
I'm trying to address fencing right now, separate of this item. You know, I went to Traffic Commission at their last meeting, and I'm, you know, we discussed it there, and now I'm looking to see if, see if we can work something out with the Parks Department, once, once we have this all settled and underway. If that addresses it.
And if not, we can maybe reach out to Mr. Craft and see if maybe he can't give us just a little bit more.
We'll rename the part.
Till the season really gets going, right?
And I appreciate taking this under the suspension of the rules. The New England Patriots are very anxious to get this project done. Brockton is only one of two sites that is actually receiving this play equipment, and it's the only site in Massachusetts that is. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of champions to team up and pair with what is a championship-rich organization.
Since you mentioned it's the only site in Massachusetts, then, then we'd be foolish to wait any longer, so we might as well move forward with it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and it's all under suspension of the rules, that we're going to act on this order this evening. By hand vote, all in favor? Opposed? You have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and good luck. Back now to number fifty-one?
Forty-nine.
I'm sorry, forty-nine. No, yes, forty-nine.
Order, and in compliance with the provisions of the election laws, notice is hereby given that the city preliminary will be held on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty seventeen, and that the city election will be held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty seventeen.
Counselors, on, on this particular one, because it's coming to us late, and as you know, we will not be here until after the September primary, I'm going to ask that somebody make a motion that we move under the suspension of the rules and act on this item this evening as well.
So moved.
Second.
And second, we act under the suspension of the rules and act on this item this evening. By hand vote, all in favor? Opposed? It's adopted. Next item.
Order that the DPW is authorized to issue two single-family home sewer connections to Brad Cartwright, the property located at fifty-three North Carey Street.
Counselor Lally?
I would like to motion to move under the suspension of the rules.
Second.
This item right now, it's a, Ward six still has a sewer moratorium, so this is just simply the installation of sewer connections.
Any comments, any concerns? So, again, the question is that we, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and act on this one this evening. Done here, a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, that we suspend the rules and act on item number fifty this evening. Again, by hand vote, all in favor? Opposed? So be it, so adopted.
Transfer of twenty thousand dollars from fiscal year eighteen budget of cemetery for ordinary maintenance of goods and supplies to cemetery personal services under the no-...
Refer to finance?
Appropriation of five hundred dollars from Enbridge Foundation to City of Brockton Fire Department Enbridge Foundation Grant Fund.
Refer to finance?
Appropriation of the latest grant award in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, EOPSS Highway Safety Division, fiscal year twenty seventeen, traffic enforcement grant to fiscal year twenty seventeen step grant fund, fund three one four one.
Refer to finance?
President?
Counselor Sodinsky?
I'd like to make a motion to move on the suspension of the rules. And the fact of matter is, it's the money. Schools going back in, it's a dangerous time of the year, this is a great item, to get the money out and get the people on the street to enforce and help keep people safe.
I'm with you, Counselor. Motion's been made in second, that we suspend the rules and act on this this evening as well. The motion has been made in second, and all in favor of that by hand vote? All opposed? Order is adopted.
Appropriation of four hundred and sixty thousand and sixty-six dollars from unappropriated estimated receipts to the Brockton public schools net school spending, in order to appropriate additional revenue in the final state budget.
Mr. President?
Counselor Foul.
I'd like to move suspension of the rule, so we act on this tonight, and actually speak on it.
Motion's been made in second, that we're going to suspend the rules and act on this this evening. This is money that goes back to the public schools versus the net school spending. All in favor of that?
Mr. President, before, before we do that...
On the motion.
On the motion, I think Mr. Petronio is here. I have a quick question that I'd like to ask him on this particular item, if I could.
No problem. Aldo?
There are no objections.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Sorry to take you out of your summer vacation, but we have a question.
I have enough sun this summer.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, he was here, we might as well ask him something, right?
Absolutely, Counselor.
Aldo, I just wanted to ask you, and people have asked this, anytime we get any additional funding for the schools, what are the funds going to be used for?
Whenever we get any additional funds, the first thing we do is we look at the classroom. So, the money always begins there. So, right now, we're in a position where we lost so many teachers due to layoffs, that we're looking at basically the number of students we have, in all the buildings that we're there in, and making sure that there's a teacher in every one of those classrooms. Then we look at specialists, we look at, you know, student adjustment counselors, paraprofessionals, anything that affects the education, it goes there first.
Because the reason why I'm bringing this up is that, so, these, this four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we're giving back to the school department is actually going to translate into jobs, or the return of funds.
Yes.
For job creation, or to replace the jo, the positions that we had lost through...
Yes, it's to call, it's to call back layoffs, exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Petronio. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Petronio? So, the motion was made in second, that we suspended the rules and acted on this, this evening. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, been adopted. Next item.
Resolve that the superintendent of schools and such other staff, as she may designate,